Meeting of the Board of Education, National Board of Education to order at 8:33, 6:33 PM.
Feels like.
6:33 PM. Mr. Mosher, I'm going to do the roll call. Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Mosher is here by telephone and you are by yourself as you recuperate, correct?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Porter?
Here.
Other attendees, we have Mr. Donovan?
Here.
And Mr. Smith. Okay. Our first item on the agenda is contracts. We have two contracts with youth council. One for out-of-school suspension and the other to provide master's level student assistant program counseling for the high schools. I'm going to let Mr. Donovan, do you mind discussing these for a short minute?
Not at all. Okay, the first one is, we've had this same contract with youth council for at least 10 years. And basically what this provides is out-of-school suspension services for, mostly for the middle school students. I mean, it does say they'll take 5th grade. I don't think there's too many 5th graders, but typically 6th, 7th, 8th, the middle school students. So that if they get suspended, that they have somewhere to go and something to do. So, we've been working with them on this program. It's been successful. I believe they keep, they make the claim 125 students throughout the year. Now, that's not, obviously they don't have 125 every day, they have a much smaller number every day, but the 125 would be the number throughout the year that potentially could be part of this program. The cost of it is $61,325. That is the same price that they have charged for the last four years, so it's the same price again this year, which is good news for our district. And this has been approved, like I said, for the past 10 years or so. And it's, if you speak to Mr. Choppa, who's head of student services, he'd say it's a valuable program that keeps the kids off the streets when they're being suspended for whatever reason.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Mosher, do you have any comments or questions?
Just a comment that I'm familiar with the program and how long it's been, you know, provided by the district. It's been very successful and the fact that they've been able to keep the price level, I think it's a win-win situation.
Great, thank you. Ms. Porter?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I noticed it's Mondays through Thursdays, so what would happen to a student who is suspended on a Friday?
That's a good question. My guess is they would stay at home, but I can, I will follow up with Mr. Choppa and get an answer for it.
I'm just curious why it was Monday through Thursday. And also for transportation, whose responsibility is it for the student to get to the location?
I believe the student, if the student's a walking student, they'd continue to walk. I mean, this is downtown, basically, where the, so if they're within walking distance, let's say an Elm Street student, they'd probably go. I don't honestly know. I think we would still provide busing, but I'm not 100% sure. Let me, let me get an answer for you on that.
Right, because if a parent was unable to provide transportation, we would still want them to be able to participate, because I am familiar with this program. It's quite good.
Okay, I'll get, I'll get that answer.
Thank you. And they do have a nice write-up here about the services that they provide. And there's really an emphasis on helping the student learn from this experience that, you know, so there's a lot of support in place.
Yes.
Which is good.
Thank you. So, I don't really have any questions. I did read through the contract and you've said that we've had this, this contract before and it hasn't gone up and it, according to some of the other board members, that it's been a, it's been a good program. So, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the contract.
So moved.
Okay. You want to second it, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is to approve the contract with youth council for out-of-school suspension services for students in grades 5 through 8 for $61,325. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
On the motion, yes. Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. The motion carries 3 to 0. Okay, the next contract is with the youth council also, to provide a master's level student assistant program counselor for the high schools. And this is budgeted at $50,000. Mr. Donovan?
Yes, back about, this was probably mentioned, if you recall, during our budget process. About three or four years ago, the board voted to add a counselor to be split between the two high schools. And they put in a budget of $50,000. That was one of the years where the budget was not approved until June. The school district was not able to find a counselor in that short amount of time, so they reached out to the youth council. The youth council provides the person, so instead of it being a payroll cost to the district and an employee, we're using the youth council as a subcontracted service. So, the first year it was in the budget, the second year it was left out of the budget in error. And basically, but the person, the schools, the two high schools still wanted the person there. So, they took $25,000 each from their budget. So then this year, in the budgeting process, I said, okay, let's take it back, give them back their $25,000 for their allocations. But when we had to cut that almost a million dollars out of the budget, this item was one of the items that we decided not to increase the budget by. So basically, it's back to those, that's why you'll see there are two, two funding numbers, $25,000 each. So basically, this person is in place and both schools continue to want to use the person's services. So, I believe this will be the fourth year of the services provided by this individual. And there's a whole list of the number of items that the counselor deals with students on.
So where is the money coming? Are the high schools still paying, or?
Yeah, the high schools are still paying because we didn't, so hopefully in the next year's budget, we'll be able to put it more on a, on an operating budget line, not, so the schools won't have to cover it.
Okay, I remember that conversation. Can you explain, what does it mean, master level?
I think it's just someone that has a master's.
I thought so. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I think it's, it's good that we, we have this service available in the high schools. And I, I think we should continue with it. I also think we should make a note that this should be next year in the, in the operating budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. So, are there any more questions or comments? So I'm going to entertain a motion to approve this contract.
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay. Okay, the motion is to approve the contract with the youth council to provide a master's level student assistance program counselor for the high schools for $50,000. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Motion carries 3 to 0. Okay, our next agenda item is food service quotes. And I believe this is for a piece of equipment, a new steamer. So I'm going to ask Mr. Donovan to elaborate on it a little bit more.
Okay, as part of our food service program, each year we budget typically around $50,000 for new equipment as part of that program. Occasionally, we'll spend more than that as you would expect if a freezer or a couple of significant cost items fail, we would go out and purchase those. But this year, there's a need at the North High School for a steamer. They, it's used each day. It basically stopped working towards the end of last year. They did repair it a number of times, but basically it's sort of come to the end of its useful life. They're not making parts anymore. So basically, as we do at our own homes, it gets to the point where it's cheaper and better just to buy a new unit. And they use this to cook pasta, vegetables, rice, et cetera. So, fairly commonly used item. They attempted to get three quotes. There's a limited number of people that bid on this sort of stuff. Typically, we can get three, but this time we could only get two quotes. Both of those are attached. And the recommendation is to choose the low bid. Who is also, since I've been here, most of the, most of the purchase, most of the items we purchase happen to be from Kittredge for these larger items. Though I do think we do have some equipment from the other vendor also. But in this, it's pretty straightforward. The cost of the, the item is significantly lower with Kittredge. So, the suggestion from Amy, who's no longer with us, but before she left, she left this with me, and she'd like to purchase the steamer from Kittredge at a cost of $11,070.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions or comments?
I think about the restaurant equipment and the amount of use that our equipment gets. It's amazing that it holds up as long as it does. I think that you're absolutely correct that when the things get to a certain point, it should be replaced. You know, that would be the most economical thing to do. So, yes, I agree and I'm supporting it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Porter?
Yes, I noticed on the first bid that there, it's included the things that the district is responsible for. So it says electrical connections and plumbing connections, et cetera. And on the second bid, those aren't mentioned at all. So...
Yes, well, since these typically plumbing electrical work's done by our union folks anyway.
Okay.
So, they'll take care of it. But I think that since this is replacing something, unless they need to maybe change, it's a newer model, so there might be a slight adjustment to some, maybe to a pipe or to something. But that's work we would typically do ourselves.
There won't be a cost to it. It would be something, okay. So there's basically no difference between the two quotes?
As far as I know, unless one item is a little better than the other, maybe, I don't, but Amy...
Okay, but they're happy with it.
Yeah, Amy thought that this, this one would do the trick.
Okay, thank you. And is this coming from last year's budget or this year's?
Well, it's the food service budget rolls over anyway.
It rolls over, okay. Yeah, you're right. Thank you.
So effectively, it will be the new budget this year because the other ones ended. But it's, the money's still there.
So it carries over?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I'm not sure if you, you can answer this, but this is, it says electric. So, it, there, it doesn't run on gas or, because it says it's an electric steamer. So I'm assuming that there's no gas connections. Do you know if there's any? Does Mr. Smith know?
They're electric. There's no gas for the steamer tables.
Okay, so it does run on gas?
No, it runs electricity.
Oh, electricity. I thought you said gas. Okay, right. It's completely electric, right? Okay. And, but there, but there is a water, automatic water feeder in there, or do they bring water to it?
Yes, it's steam, so you need water to, yes.
Right. Well, some of the steamers, you can actually bring water to it and dump it in. But this, okay, great. I just, so there will be some plumbing involved?
As Mr. Donovan says, chances are very good it's already there.
Yeah, yeah, everything is probably already there. So there's probably just a quick hookup. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so unless there are any more questions or comments, I can entertain a motion to approve the purchase of...
So moved.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mosher.
And I'll second.
And seconded by Ms. Porter.
All right.
Okay. On the motion to approve the purchase of a new steamer for food service at North High School for $11,070, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
And Mr. Garino votes yes. Motion carries 3 to 0. Okay. Next on our agenda is security bids, Brentwood. And that would be Mr. Smith?
Yes, good evening. So in your package, it was a short memo describing what we're proposing to purchase. And attached to that was a spreadsheet listing the pricing that we received from three vendors. We did go back out for a best and final round of bids. We saw some inconsistencies with some of the cameras that were being proposed. So we updated those and got three more bids. And the vendor, who is our vendor that does all our maintenance for us anyway and was involved in the installation, ends up the low bid for the base cost of $11,916.70. That replaces their original bid of $19,204. So this does place them in the lowest bid category. And if you go to the second sheet of paper, it lays out pretty well what we're, what we're buying. So, NetVR is like, is the recording device, various cameras that we're installing. There's only three cameras. One is in the main entrance, one was an interior corridor, and a third one is, is back in the physical education area, which also covers the rear entrance. As, currently there is no system at all at the current Brentwood, or the past Brentwood location. So this is all really new to the program, but it consists of what we put in all our schools. The AI phone is the intercom device you hit when you first come to the main entrance of any school. Lurch the secretary that you're coming in and they get to see a picture of you and decide whether or not you're okay to let in. There's a burglary alarm attached with it. And then the rest of it's really installation. And we are arming the rear door, which is right next to the physical education area. The alternates, there were two proposed by all the vendors and we do not recommend moving forward with those as they are more or less extra and replace existing equipment that's already in the location that we can probably reuse. And I'm ready for any questions.
Ms. Porter?
So, their first bid was for $19,000, then it went to $11,000?
Yes.
Was it for the same services and equipment?
Basically, yes. We had dialogue, as I said, about the cameras and we, they indicated to us that the cameras that we bid, that we specified are no longer in production. So they provided us a new one. But I can only attribute to the fact that they really want our business.
Okay.
And they have our business now, but they want to keep it. The interesting sideline of this whole process, as we now know, there are two other vendors out there that can compete with security. And we will reach out to them in the future.
So, for all of the bids, you're basically getting the same thing, the only variable is the price?
Yes.
So there's no reason not to go with the lowest bid?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I was just thinking about, you know, the availability of a different electronic pieces of equipment. And if it's anything like the computers, you have one which will be available now for the next two years. And then when they have an upgrade or a change in it, then you either upgrade or you buy a new one. So, yeah, and then, you know, I didn't ask what, what the expected life of these cameras are going to be. So I know that they, they all have a failure rate. We used to talk about electronics, you know, having a problem with infinite mortality. And I'm just wondering if we know what the service life of these things are.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mosher, the, I can tell you that the cameras that we installed back when this whole program was initiated, what, five or six years ago, most of those are still in place. The beauty of the newer technology, it's digital, it doesn't have moving parts, just digitally takes a picture of the surrounding instead of actually having a moving camera inside. So, I mean, my experience is at least five or six years and then some of them, there's no indication. We have, we've had a small amount of failure, maybe 5%.
That sounds pretty good. I, I think we got a good deal there. So let's go with it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mosher. So, Mr. Smith, you're looking for approval today?
Yes, I am. And it would, the funds would come out of our building and grounds maintenance line, which is listed on the cover memo.
Go ahead, Mr. Donovan, go ahead.
Since we're going to be putting this equipment at a rented facility, if at the end of the three-year term, we decide to leave that facility, can we bring this with us? I mean, we could bring the cameras, right? You could take them off and bring them somewhere else?
Yes. The majority of it, we could probably bring with us. Some of it, you may not want to bother, involves wiring and that sort of thing. So your biggest ticket items are the recording device, the NetVR. That's over $3,000 by itself. So that would certainly be something you'd recover. The cameras you would recover, the AI phone you could recover. The rest of it's small stuff that...
Yeah, or labor that you wouldn't get that go, obviously.
Or labor, right.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Porter.
And when would this be installed?
As soon as possible after the board of ed approves it. So, probably a month, just judging from the lead time for materials. So it'll be sometime in September.
It's a quick installation?
Yes.
Once you have it, okay.
And your, the amount you're looking for is $11,916.70?
That's correct.
Okay. So unless there are, aren't any more comments or questions, I could entertain a motion to approve Brentwood's security system for $11,916.70?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. On, on the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. The motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the food service review. Do you want to comment on that, Mr. Donovan?
Sure.
Okay.
I think, I don't think a lot of people know how much the, the food service program is probably reviewed more closely than any other program in the whole district. The funds are provided by the federal government, but it's passed down through the state and the state manages it. They have people that come down and it's typically every four to five years, and they come and they review the program in incredible detail. We have had, since I've been here, two very good food service directors, so most of our reviews have gone quite well. But the level of detail that they review is, and we'll get into a little more of that in a minute, is, is pretty incredible. The, when you look at the report, sometimes you say, whoa, we're not doing this, or we're missing this. We're actually doing the, when you speak with the person that does the review, or Mrs. Hodges, we do a very, very good job here, the food service staff. Let's give them the credit. They're the ones that do it. But to give you a sense, as the letter said, they came in for a review in, in May, and they reviewed the lunch program, the breakfast program, which is different than the lunch program, the fresh fruit and vegetable program, that's another lunch program, the after snack, school snack program. And then they, they also reviewed all our procurement processes. And within each of those programs, they went through a very detailed review. The, as it turned out, there was a small amount of money of $1,690 that was reduced from one of our payments, of which 1,300 of that was related to lunch and 355 was related to breakfast. And typically, excuse me. What, what basically caused that was, most of the time, you, they go through a very detailed process where they match what was sold to the production records. And the production records are a list of all the items that were put together. So what typically was happening occasionally in the, for these, why these numbers occurred, let's say it's breakfast time, they had put out, let's say, 25 orange juices, because that's usually how many they need for that certain school. And then there was an increase in the demand for orange juice, so the, the workers just went, got more orange juice, put it in, and then didn't mark it on their records. So then when they went back and compared and they said, okay, well, you, you requested reimbursement for 30 orange juices and your production record said you only had 24 out there, so we're not going to pay you for those other six. So it's, it's to that kind of detail. And, but like I said, this amount of money versus the amount of money that goes through our program, you know, it's a $3 million annual program, this is a pittance, really. So, but Amy, before she left, went through and said, okay, when you bring out more, you know, food or drink or et cetera, make sure, make a note, make sure you do that. But is it going to be perfect? Probably not. I mean, as anyone that's been in a, in a school-wide cafeteria, it can get kind of crazy sometimes. So, all in all, we'll, we'll try to improve on that. So basically, the review is complete. The, the next few pages sort of gave a few highlights of the, the final items that we needed to either prepare a plan or respond in some way. And we've done that for the most part. So the first one was to, to create a, develop a system that will actually match, it says DC students, those are, I believe, direct charge students with household members. So for example, if a family is on, let's say, food stamps, then they get a, the, the food service here in Nashua will, will get a download directly from the state. So they'll say, okay, the members of the Smith family, let's say, on 12 Johnson Street, we don't have to worry about them, they're receiving food stamps, so they're not required to fill out the paperwork for the free and reduced lunch. It just automatically moved down. And if, let's say they were to stay on that program for three or four years as a family, then they wouldn't have to do it for three or four years. If they fell off that program, then they'd be required to fill out the forms. But that's something that's only happened the last couple of years. Prior to that, everybody had to fill out the forms. So now that it's done, it's reduced the amount of forms, but we didn't have a written process on how we're going to deal with that. So now we sort of put that in place. Then there's, there was a thing about the, I talked about before, the production records. That was item two. So there's a process in place for that. And hopefully we'll reduce any small issues that we had. The third item is a meal charging policy. So I will be requesting from the policy committee.
And who's head of that now, is it?
Heather.
Heather Raymond?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That basically, we have a full, a meal charging policy in place now. They just want to make sure that they reflect the difference being, between... They just want to make sure that they reflect the difference being, between delinquent and bad debt. The reality, that is not a big deal for us. We will probably put some wording in on the policy. But at the end of each year, end of each school year, if there have been lunches that were not paid for, we basically take that back to the operating budget anyway. So, to us, it's not delinquent, we, if it's not paid by the end of the year, we don't roll it into the following year with the student. We simply just write it off as bad debt. So, we'll put something like that. I'll speak with, with Ms. Raymond and we can put some wording in the policy. But since I, I explained to the food service, it's an actual policy, so the board has to go through it. I just can't change a policy myself. And then they talked about a complaint grievance procedure for food service that needs to be added. So, basically, I, I will work with the director of HR and we'll create a form so that if, we'll put a procedure in place. I don't really think we need a policy per se, just a procedure.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Porter.
Is that a complaint against the food service or a complaint of a food service worker?
No, food service worker would have a complaint through their contract. This would be maybe a parent complaining about food service for whatever reason.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item was a school wellness policy. We do have a wellness committee that does a good job. They meet maybe three or four times a year. So, they have been contacted and they will, as they meet during this school year, they will update the wellness policy to speak about the items mentioned here. So, Robin Abadili, the nurse at, Dr. Crisp, I believe?
I think so.
She's been the chairperson of that committee, so they're gonna meet together and, and create that policy. So, that will be, it's an open item at this point, but it will be cleared out, once, cleared up, once they get together. Then there, item six was smart snacks. That, that's sort of an issue. We have created a policy, Amy created it, we send it up, so it's not an outstanding item anymore, though it's something that's very difficult for any food service person to manage. They're not in charge of all the schools when it comes to fundraisers and things like that. It's more a principal thing. She speaks with the principals, she, the food service is pretty strict. They don't want you serving anything that doesn't meet the nutritional guidelines during the school hours. And sometimes popcorn with a lot of butter does not fit, but some of the schools do it as a fundraiser and things. So, there is a policy in place. I'm certainly not gonna have the food service director in charge of running around to all the schools to find out how much butter they put on popcorn if they're having. But, but we, we do have the policy, we share it with each principal and say, this is what we would like you to do. And then-
Is this a board policy?
It's not really a board policy, no. It's more of a, yeah, I probably shouldn't use that word with board people, but it's more of a procedure at request of the schools.
A school procedure.
Okay, and then the, there was some talk about professional standards, so it was a tracking sheet, which basically was tracking the trainings and it didn't have the date that every, it had all the list of all the trainings that all the staff took, it just didn't have the date. So, this is the kind of level of detail we get, we get reviewed at. So, now they've changed the spreadsheet and they've added dates now, so people, they'll have that there for them. Then there's another, this was a new thing, the Buy American. This is something that I think came out in the last couple of years, where they want schools to buy American wherever they can. Now, if you think about it, you say, well, don't we buy, isn't almost all the food American? It really isn't. I mean, if you need fresh fruits and it's February, sometimes you get, you get the grapes come from Chile, let's say, or. So, when it comes to certain of the fresh fruit, certain things, if you can buy it and it's available, that's the plan, go ahead and buy American. If not, then you don't have to buy everything that way, but. So, that was a policy put together by Ms. Cassidy before she left. Then the after-school program, the after-school program, the last couple times, we've had different people running that. They weren't keeping track of the snacks in the detailed fashion that the program suggests slash requires. So, but Gail Casey is now head of that 21st Century program. She's been shown the ropes and hopefully she will follow those going forward. So, we have a, a procedure in place and now it just needs to be followed. And then the procurement review. This program, every single year, goes out and gets bids on most items, though, starting last year, there's a New Hampshire buying group, which goes out and gets bids for the whole state, so all the food service programs can use those prices if they feel they're advantageous. So, I think last year was the first year we started doing that. So, there was a, a training process related to that that needed to be put together. So, basically, we're, we're pretty much done. We do need to do, as I said, we have to get that policy done. We have to, um, put the grievance procedure and we'll get the information from the wellness policy. When those three things are cleared up, then we'll be all set until the next review in four or five years.
Oh, good.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Mosher, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, sir.
After being in the district, associated with the district for so many years, I have come to believe that the people who review these, the food services, that they put it under a microscope, or at least a very powerful magnifying glass, because they, they pick up just about anything and everything. And the fact that the, the feds are so involved in, in the food service and what gets purchased and what gets served and the nutritional values, et cetera, that really is something that we, we are very much under surveillance on all of these items. And I think that they manage the, the food service so very well that we always have enough left over to, you know, supply pieces of equipment that have reached obsolescence. I think that says a lot for us food service people. So, yep, we're all set.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Ms. Porter?
I just, so is the food service department responsible for all of these items? So, they're responsible for the smart snacks and for the after-school program? That all falls under the umbrella of the food service? I have no idea. Wow, that's a lot.
Yeah, it's, it's bigger than most people think, 'cause I mean, most people just say, okay, they, they feed lunch to the kids.
This is quite a bit. This is comprehensive, so.
There's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Oh, boy, I know.
Nice job, good job.
Thank you. Yeah, I have to, I have to compliment the food service on, on their hard work. It, it, there's a lot of schools and a lot to think about and a lot to, a lot to take care of.
Cafeterias are busy places.
So, we don't need any action on this?
No, that was more of a update on a, the way I look at it, it's sort of an audit, so I think people should sort of know and when it's good news, it should be shared.
Right, and we'll, we'll be looking for a couple of changes on our policies based on that report at the policy committee regarding food service. That are gonna be rising up, one from the wellness committee, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure the wellness committee rises to the board or not. It might.
Well, I mean, it'll be passed on through.
Yes.
'Cause there, there's a, there's a memo in here that they're gonna be, the team is gonna be meeting in October to develop measurable goals to be added to a policy.
Yeah, okay, all right.
But, you know, it'll, it'll come to our committee.
Yes. Well, it'll go through policy committee.
Right, right. That's what I meant, policy committee. Yep. Okay, great. We're moving right along and next item is the fiscal 2019 July transfer report. Mr. Donovan?
Okay, we'll just run through these quickly. The first two are basically the curriculum budget. When the curriculum budget was put together in December, it basically just sort of, they just took what they had the previous year, copied it and, and put the numbers in, in a lot of the categories. Then, as the year went on, 'cause keep in mind, that happens in December, so as the, the second half of the school year went on, they decided going into this year, they'd like to spend the money in some different accounts. So, all this is doing is moving the same pot of money from one set of accounts to another set of accounts. So, that's what the first two are. The next one is, actually, we don't even do this most of the time, but there was an individual who was put into the budget as a full-time person, but it's really a .8. So, she, she was moved to part-time, 'cause officially she is part-time, so. But to be honest with you, there's still people that are part-time and full-time and sometimes they show up in the budget in one place and they'll show up in the Lawson system in another place. That's something that probably needs to get cleaned up. So, even though this is just one person, I said, go ahead and do it, but there's probably more that needs to get done. Nashville High School North is the next one. That's just moving, they didn't budget enough in their arts, so they moved it from their shared group to the art department. The next is, the next one is, as you know, we had the Power Scholars Academy. So, typically, we used to have the Summer Sizzlers, I believe it was called, where we would take all, we would do all the hiring of the employees and pay them. Power Scholars did that this year. So, most, a lot of them were our employees, but they went and effectively worked for them. So, all we're doing here is taking it out of sort of labor, which additional hours is a labor account and moving it to contracted services, because effectively, we're paying the Y and the Y is gonna turn around and pay these people. Fairgrounds Middle School, they're using some of their allocation to buy some student lockers. So, they didn't originally decide they were gonna do that and now they've made the decision to do so. So, it's their allocation. My opinion, they're free to do with it what they would like. The next one is another one of the curriculum. As I mentioned, the first two in the beginning, they're just moving around to more accurately portray how they plan on spending in this coming school year. Then there's one for Broad Street. They wanna purchase a shredder, so they took it out of supplies and put it into equipment. Then there is Brentwood. Now, the cost for us to get computer and phone up there, the cost is about $24,000, which is higher than I think anyone expected. But we need to do it. They have to have a network, they have to have phones. So, what I'm doing for now is taking $19,500 out of the rental account and I'm putting it into computer equipment so that they can get the computer equipment and phone up and running for the first day of school. As Mr. Smith mentioned, the security system won't be up and running for the first day of school. It'll be a couple of weeks late, but I, I think we're fine with that. But we do need to have computers and phones working sooner rather than later. So, basically, I'm just moving it from rentals into this to make the purchase. We're probably gonna overrun this account because of this, but I'll know a lot more in the spring when I get to the point, if there's some extra money in another account. So, it's really sort of a temporary thing to make it happen, because the total amount we put aside for this move is not gonna cover all of the costs. 'Cause I just, we didn't, we didn't think it was gonna be this much. And then the last item is, basically, this one is, is for last year, for fiscal year 2018. And I think there was some in last month where there was some late advertising costs that came in. We needed to book them. The advertising account had overrun its budget already, so there was extra in the heating fuel, so we just moved it to cover that. So, that's the last transfer you'll probably see for 2018. All the previous ones were for this coming school year.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, no, but I'd like to move it, move it along.
Okay, move to approve the, okay, we'll have discussion. Move to approve the fiscal year 2019 transfer report by Mr. Mosher and I'll, I'll second it. And on the discussion, Ms. Porter?
I have a question about the summer school payment, the $40,000. So, if we have a teacher who works during the, I guess I'm just wondering if they're being paid by the Y, is that counting towards their retirement? 'Cause if they were working in the summer and being paid by the district, it would go towards their retirement. But if they're being, it's the same teacher who works for the district, but is being paid in the summer by the Y.
If it's being paid by the Y, it would not count towards their retirement, no.
Do they know that?
I don't know.
Okay, 'cause I know a lot of people work in the summer so that that money goes towards their retirement.
Yeah, this certainly wouldn't. There are, some summer pays go towards retirement, some don't. I believe you're right and this does, but.
'Cause we used to pay them through-
Yeah, we paid them out of a-
The summer sizzlers.
Yes, and that was on-
They were paid by the district, but now that the, this program is managed by the Y, those teachers who are working through the district full-time, they're, they're working summer school, but it's not going towards their retirement.
No, it's not.
Is there a way to let them know that? That's a personal, no, I'm just saying, as a teacher, when you're, when you're working and you're assuming, I guess maybe you don't know what account you're, is there paycheck coming from the Y?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So, then they would know because it's, okay, thank you.
Okay. So, on the motion to approve the fiscal year 2019 transfer report, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Motion carries, three to zero. Okay, the next item is fiscal year 2019 financial report. Mr. Donovan?
Okay, so I'll just spend a couple minutes, 'cause it's the first month of the year, it's the July report. There's no, there's been no salaries for teachers or people that work school year yet. So, the only salaries that you see in here are people that get paid throughout the year, like directors and principals and custodial staff, et cetera. So, that's, so there's not, not much in here. As you can see, the percent used in the payroll is 1.56%, so it's a pretty small number. Just to quickly look, the wages, temp seasonal, that's $17,949. That's high because the summer help that works with grounds and the summer help that works with IT. So, you'll see that high again in the month of August and then that will start to go down again. The additional hours number is $140,000 for the month. That's 51650. And that's the summer school, not, would not count the Power Scholars group, but it would be all the other summer school. The biggest program in that is the, the special ed, the SY program. And then there's on 51750, you'll see retirement and separation pay. That's $123,000. Does not include any of the teachers. That is mostly administrators. The dollar amounts, mostly administrators. There's also a couple of pairs and custodians that had much smaller amounts. But as we get into the year end and the next, next discussion, we'll talk more about that. So, that's a sort of a, it's a big number, since it doesn't include any teachers. It's usually the biggest chunk of the retirements of teachers, 'cause we have many more teachers than we have any other position. than we have any other position. Okay, other than that, there's really not a whole lot of items. The only other thing that I really looked up was on page two. It's the dues and memberships, which is under the other services, 55200. It's $22,000, which is a significant portion of the budget. And I believe $12,000 of that was the NHIAA, which is the athletic, the two high schools joined the Athletic Association. That was $12,000, and then there was about $8,000 to NIASK. So that's what most of the $22,000 was. Other than that, like I said, there's not too, too much. There's nothing that stands out. We're only 3.86% as a whole through July spent, but like I said, one month, a summer month. So that's pretty much all there is to say about that. I don't know if you had any questions on anything else, but in that.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on the financial report?
Oh, no, not really.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Porter?
No.
Okay. Okay, so our last item on our agenda is the Fiscal 2018 Year End Forecast. Mr. Donovan?
Okay. We are just about done closing the year. If you flip over to the second side of the page, there's a couple things left that I'll be working with the city on over the next week or two. The county manager over there is on vacation, so I think when she returns, we'll talk about these last couple items. But for the most part, we are, we're done. Now, if you look in the box, you see, the first box there, you'll see remaining. That's a negative 200, rounding off at negative 275,000. The last forecast that I did, I projected that number to be 105,000. Basically, two items moved it from 105 up to the 275 number. One was a out-of-district transportation bill from one of our vendors that didn't come until late. I was under the impression we had received all the transportation bills. This one came in late. It was for a number of students that we transfer far away. So that was about $50,000. And then my favorite account, the out-of-district tuition, turned out to be 114,000 higher than I had projected last time. So you add the 105 to 50, the 114, that gets you to 270. The number's 275, so there are a couple other small items. So this is the first time since I've been here that this number has been negative at this point in time. So in effect, you could say that we have overspent our operating budget, which isn't a good thing. Now, let me just, before I tell you how we're going to deal with that, we'll just turn to the first page, and I'll just highlight some of the, sort of the big pluses and the big minuses, since this is probably the last time we'll really go over this for this year. In the labor accounts, typically, there's some excess money in the labor accounts. When you look down, you'll see it's 100% used. So basically, we used, we even overran by 86,000 our labor accounts. Our labor accounts are 80% of our budget. So if you're going to spend 86,000 more on your labor accounts, that's not, that's typically not a good thing. The account that really was significantly higher, and I think I've mentioned it before, is the 51750, the retirement and separation pay. That was 1,076,000. We budgeted 800,000, so it was 276,000 over what we projected. Sometimes in a given year, if some of the other labor accounts are under, it can handle that overflow. The interesting amount, if you were over by 275, this account's over by 276. It's not all that simple, but if you wanted to, you could say, "Okay, that was one of the areas." So then when we slide down to the 5300, the professional technical services, you'll notice under the encumbrance column, there's a number there, 76,234. So some of that number, I think, is going to be reversed, $25,000 or so, and I'll mention that more in the end, but that's the account that I'll be talking about when I talk about how we're going to deal with the overrun. And what that is, is we do all our, the bulk of that 76,000 encumbrance is, well, about two-thirds of it is one vendor who does all our billing for the Medicaid. So we don't need all that. We pay a certain percent to them. We don't need everything that's in there, so we'll apply some invoices that we got in late to that, and then there'll be some more money. So that's partially what we'll be taking back. The next group of accounts, the property services, you know, as you can see, those first two, electricity and heating gas, we actually, that was sort of a good news thing. You know, we had 103,000 and 127,000, and even in water, 21,000. So we did have excess in those property service accounts. Not enough to cover the accounts I'll talk about in a minute, but we did have excess And then at the bottom of that, you'll notice the rentals line. Under the summer column, I have $24,000. That's the final Brentwood utilities and rent calculation, which I'm working on right now. Hasn't yet been paid. It will be paid soon. That number will be trued up, but it's probably not going, it's not going to be any higher than that. It may be lower, so there may be a little bit of sort of helping reduce that number, the 275 number on the back. And then we slide down to the last part, I mean, the last part on this page, the other services. And you take a look, and you can see the transportation lines, the regular and the sped transportation. One was positive, one was negative, but they were a negative by a little over $50,000. That, last month, I had projected to be about minus 6,000. It's turned out to be like minus 54 or so. So that was that $50,000 invoice that I just was unaware of. Hopefully, that won't happen again. And then the tuition out of district. Last month, I had that number, 114,000 lower, so it was like 780,000 or so over budget. It ended up being $903,000 over budget. So once again, that, that is the line that needs to be fixed when we put together the fiscal year '20 budget. We just can't be, you can't overrun a line by 903,000, even if you have a $106 million budget, $110 million budget. So that's once again that account. And then sort of flip over right down towards the bottom, a little, little more of good news under the budget adjustments. The very last 90500, it's 47,000 better than it would have been. And basically, that's sort of our facility rentals. So we have been bringing some money in on facility rentals, more than we've been budgeting, which is a good thing. We do have a new facilities calendar that we're rolling out. Hopefully, that will make things easier for everyone involved.
I'll hand it to Jack.
So that's that. So we come back to, okay, right now, the number is 274,000. If I had to make entries today, which I don't, but I will have to make them soon, how am I going to come up with 274,000? So basically, the solution is, I talked earlier about the encumbrances up on the Contract Services line, so I'm projecting we can take about 25,000 from there. I'll reduce that encumbrance, which will open up 25,000, so the remaining number will be 250,000, not 275 any longer. So that still leaves us 250. My plan, if I had to do the entry today, would be to charge 50,000 of that to a special revenue fund that we have a balance of 434,000 in right now. That is money that gets, we bring in for kids coming to our special ed programs from other towns. So 434, you take away the 50, you still have a balance of about 385,000. This year, I had to, I actually charged about 250,000 to that account of some of our out-of-districts. So we do need that account to cover some of the out-of-district. We charge amount, some of the out-of-district costs there each year. So this number that you see here of 900,000, it's actually even more than that, if you count the 250. And then, so there'll still be a balance, like I said, in that account. The other, the other plan at this point is to charge 200,000 to a retirement reserve. We have on the books a reserve account of 276,000, which was put in place to cover years when the retirement costs increased. This year, the retirement costs were, you know, 1,076, I think it was. Yep, 1,076. We've been averaging about seven, over the last six years, the average has been about 700,000. So as you can see, this was a high number this year. I don't like to use the reserve, but, I mean, they're there when things like this happen. So the plan is to use 200,000 against the retirement reserve at this point. Now, that being said, I still am working with the city on a few things. We may be able to make a few changes. If need be, I'll sort of update everyone at the next Finance and Ops. But at this point in time, we will need to take some of the overage in the operating budget and charge it to either a special revenue fund or that retirement reserve, and that's kind of the plan right now. And then we'll see how it goes. And like I said, I'll, my suggestion to the superintendent, come November, December, when we start the fiscal year '20 budget, will be to increase the out-of-district reserve by a significant amount. And it's, in my mind, it's a minimum of about 600,000. I'll work more on the number later with the superintendent. But I think before we go hiring anybody or do anything else, we really just need, we need to fix this. This number has skyrocketed. We have a student now where we just got an invoice in for this year. They've raised their rates 15%. This one student now is going to cost $255,000 for one school year. So there's not a lot we can do. The student's in the best place according to the IEP, et cetera. There's a lot of, a lot of other things I don't, won't get into now regarding students like that, but it's just the costs of out-of-district are going up and up. They don't have the same, they don't seem to have the same issues that regular school districts do, that have public school districts that have to deal with property taxes. They're able to seem to increase their costs more, and once a student's there, it's hard to take them out. So this is the first time I've run into this, but, you know, we do have the reserves. When I first got here, we really didn't have any reserves, so we had some good years early. We put some money into reserves four days like this. And I think going forward, this retirement reserve will be down to about 76,000. I'd like to be able to get more money back into that in future years to cover if we do have another big year. Because I think it was back in 2011 or something where the retirement costs were like 1.3 million. That was the last large number. Since then, like I said, it's been averaging 700, and then this year it went back closer to 1.1.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. It's a lot of, a lot of hard work, a lot of thought. Does anyone have any questions or comments, Mr. Mosher?
Not really. I know we were running a little over there, but I think that Mr. Donovan has it under control, and we should see how we make out during the rest of the year. I think we should come out pretty much even. So I approve it.
Thank you.
And let's turn it on.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Porter?
I have a question. So the retirement reserve, how did that money come to be there?
We put that in, it was over a couple of years back about seven years ago, when we had excess operating budget money, and we put it into a reserve.
Oh, okay, okay.
We also have like 100,000 in utilities, because basically, what can't we control ourselves? We can't control out-of-district. I mean, we can somewhat, but once the student's out-of-district, it's hard to control the costs that we're being invoiced for. Retirement, we can't control how many people retire in any given year, right? We can't control if it turns into a really cold winter and fuel prices leap up. Now, we put in long-term contracts, so we can control them for a certain amount of time, but when that contract comes up, if prices are really high, there's not a lot we can do at that point. So we've got reserves for each one of those accounts that are more difficult to control. So, but like I said, we were able to put them in on years when we had extra money. But that was back when we were spending 4 million in out-of-district five years ago, you know? Now we're spending 6.
So we're dependent on overages to replenish those accounts?
For the most part. Now, you could put in a resolution and try to get money, but it would be, you know, there's a whole process to that.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. My takeaway from this is that the out-of-district costs are really a big chunk, they're taking a big chunk out of our budget. The next time, next year, when we go into our budget season and we do our budget, that should be, that should be definitely discussed by the Budget Committee. It should, a discussion of out-of-district costs should actually be part of the ongoing discussion in the city itself. This isn't just something that is the school district's problem. This is a city problem. And, I mean, it's $900,000 over the budget, and the total cost is upwards of close to $5 million for the entire year, and that doesn't, that's not counting transportation. So we can't continue to go on like this. We're rating reserves for other, other items, and I hope people are watching at home, and they, and they understand this, where the costs, where the spiraling costs are in education. And I'm not begrudging any student out there or family that has special needs. We obviously want to meet those special needs, but we have to try to understand why, why the costs are going up. It's not, it's not just, not because of schools, you know, regular school. This is, this is something that, that should be, that people should be aware of, I think. I hope people become aware of this. So thank you very much, Mr. Donovan. And that should bring us to the close of our, of our meeting. And if anyone, if, if anyone has any more questions or comments, if we don't have any more questions or comments, I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan, very much for all your work, and motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. The motion carries. We are adjourned at 7:42 PM. Thank you.